Okay. Hi, everyone. Good morning. I'm Deanna Fiero and I'm the fourth district candidate for school board for Richmond Public Schools. It's so bright and early and I can see that people are logging on right now. I just want to let everybody know, this is my first time doing this, I'm on Zoom and I'm streaming into Facebook, so there's a slight delay, which feels really funny because I can see my screens, but if you have questions when you put in your comments, just remember there is a slight delay. So don't think that I'm not getting to your question or that I won't get to your question. I will try my hardest to get to it within our 30 minutes. And if I don't, I'll reach out to you personally and try to answer your question. But thank you to everyone, I'm trying to see if I can see my comments. Yes. All right. Yes, Ms. Tisha and Louise, good morning, good morning. This is so cool. It's too bad that my students don't think Facebook is cool. It would be so easier to meet with them on here. So we'll just give it a couple of minutes and see who else logs on. Hi, Sarah Beth, hello. I can't wait to get together with all of the volunteers and have a chance to meet together and and laugh and joke and see what's going on and hear about everybody's stories in education and in the community. Yeah. So I, if you can hear me just fine, can somebody put a comment just so that I know that the sound is okay? And while you're waiting, I do have coffee, I'm not kidding, I'm very serious about coffee. Thank you, thank you Kelly for that. Yeah, somebody else had asked me, a couple of people had actually asked me, they said, why so early? And I said, well, let's fill out some times, we'll try 9:30, we'll do coffee, see if people get into that. And for some, some of our parents, you know, the kiddos are still asleep right now, so mine's asleep, my 14 year old's asleep and I'm not trying to wake her up right away, so this is a good chance to actually get to sit at the computer, enjoy that cup of joe and get some questions in about education. And if we need to later in the future, I'll shift some times or have some later in the evening for some of our other residents and community members of Richmond Public Schools. So this is so cool, thank you to everybody that showed up. Thank you, I see we have about 13 viewers right now, that's great. All right, well, we'll go ahead and get started. I do want to be respectful of everybody's time, these meetings are only going to last about 30 minutes and it's just a check in. I just want to hear from you, I want to know what are your current concerns? And you know, what are, what are your comments, what do you want to see change in Richmond Public Schools? What can I do to help that happen? And just in general, your experience of Richmond Public Schools within the city of Richmond. But first, let me go ahead and introduce myself a little bit more to everyone, because I know that a lot of the people that have have been supporting my campaign either know me personally from working with me or just from friendships outside of work. And I want to make sure that, you know, our neighbors and our families that are in the fourth district and are within Richmond Public Schools, get to know me more as your school board member and get to know me more as another member of the community, so. I moved to Richmond in 2011 with my daughter from El Paso, Texas, that's originally where I am from. I am third generation Mexican American, that means that my grandmother was actually the one who had the immigrant story, she is the one who came over to the US from Mexico to change her life. She wanted to try something different, she had a very structured and strict life in Mexico and she decided that she wanted to try something different, she wanted to have more freedom. You could say that even in a way she was a feminist in her own right and she, she did not agree with some of the views of how women were treated and what they were allowed to do, so. That's where our story began here in the US. My mom tried college for a while. After high school, she had some difficulty with that, she did suffer from bipolar. She both, she was bipolar and that was an issue for her, which also relates to my story. Growing up with a parent with mental illness was very difficult. But it was in my schools that I found safety, so when I think of our students in Richmond Public Schools that have trauma or experienced trauma that comes from their home or the community, I can relate, I can definitely relate. I didn't know that I had actually been labeled an at-risk student until maybe about middle school. And even more, when I started getting into education, I, I went back one time in, in a box of items, personal items from growing up, I found a report card and I found a report card from elementary, which is where my mother suffered a lot of mental stress and we felt it at home. And I looked at my report card and I said, wow, this, these grades and these absences and everything that I'm seeing in here is technically what at the time, you know, the term at risk was really being used, I was, I was one of those students. And then that got me to reflect about education and I said, you know, what was it about school that, that didn't, that didn't allow me to realize that I was, was living in such trauma growing up and it was really the educators that worked at the school, it was the community and it was a citywide emphasis on children where I grew up. So that is, that is kind of the center of what I would like to see for Richmond Public Schools. I would like for us to create a school system that that whatever our students are bringing with them from home, whatever issues are happening and whatever lack of services that are happening in our community from our, you know, our city governance or state governance, that our students are not feeling it when they, when they come to our schools. That, you know, our educators are creating a safe space where they are still able to grow, they are still able to be children, their social emotional needs are met and their whole child needs are met, so. When I think of education and why this is important to me and personally how I feel connected to our students, that's part of my story. But I'm going back to when I moved here, so my daughter and I moved here in 2011 and I started my practice and education here, this is, I transferred my, you know, my license and my degree over from Texas to, to Richmond. And I started in 2011, in October, started a little late in the school year because I moved here a little late at MLK, so I was at Martin Luther King Middle School, Junior Middle School, and I was actually in the old building when it was about to be shut down and turned into the new building, we shifted over to the new building. So I saw a lot of, a lot of interesting things in the school, I saw that there was a lot of struggles and I, you know, I saw what, what a lot of people would say, sometimes it's, you know, it's not the kids, it's the adults. And or it's, you know, and the teachers would say it's not us, it's the admin and admin would say it's not us, it's parents, so everybody was always passing, you know, you know, the, the bug to somebody else and, and not, not sure what was happening. And that's when I really started to think, well, what is really going on? And from my, my education and teaching, I was always taught, when you go into a school as a teacher, you go in, you learn your policies and your bylaws, you look at what is going on in the internal infrastructure of your school, what are the rules, what are the parameters? And what are the procedures, what, what is the standard procedure when you have a parent that calls you or you know, how do, how can you talk to your admin about an evaluation, things like that, so. When I got deep into the policies and procedures of our schools back in 2011, I had seen that some of our policies had not been updated since 85, 1985, so that's a very long time for us to ignore the main skeleton of a school system. So after that, I moved to Albert Hill Middle School after three years of being at MLK. And at Albert Hill Middle School, I had more of an opportunity to, to take on some more leadership roles. I was able to be on the leadership team as a math department chair. I was able to sponsor clubs, I got to build more connections with students in the community and then I even taught my daughter, so I taught my daughter, my daughter when she was in seventh grade, which was even more of a learning experience and as an educator, it was important to me to do well with all my students. And when I had my daughter, it was like, look, the quality of education is really good enough for my daughter and I was able to prove it, you know? And now she's doing well and after four years, I've found, found myself getting to a wall saying, look, I really want to make more change in Richmond Public Schools. I want to do more, I want to help more of our students and I want to, I want to help change the school system. So it's beneficial to all of our families and all of our students despite their backgrounds, despite their socioeconomic status, this, this site, beside any status. And I had to make the hard decision to leave Richmond Public Schools, so in order to be on the school board, and I know some people have asked me this question, why, why'd you leave, why not stay? In order to be on the school board, you cannot be an employee of Richmond Public Schools, essentially you would be signing your own contract, which but we cannot, so. I am an educator right now, I'm still a classroom teacher and, and I'm in our neighboring county. And I just finished my masters in educational leadership, I do have some long-term goals, I would like to be an administrator one day. Hopefully, one day in the future, I would like to come back to Richmond Public Schools and as, as an administrator. And my heart is very, very much in education policy, so I do have some long-term goals of, of studying education policy. So with that, before I go deeper into why I'm running, are there any questions, does anybody have any questions? Can I get some hellos in the chat, in the comment? And good morning to everybody who's just coming in. And thank you Lisa, Lisa's an amazing educator and a true, true model educator for everybody. Hello, Principal Murphy, I see that you are on. I'm so sad that, that Alkar Thompson, I'm grateful that Alkar Thompson is going to a new building, all the students there, but I'm sad that we're going to lose a lot of great teachers out of the fourth district and a lot of amazing students. Good morning to everyone. All right, well, please remember if you do have any questions to go ahead and pop them in and we will stop at 10 o'clock and I will hold some more of these events. And based on, you know, feedback, if we need to make some a little bit later, because coffee is not your thing or because you drink your coffee later at 12, which I do sometimes, just let me know. All right, well, um. So there are three main pillars for why I'm running for school board and I would have to say the first one is retaining educators. And when I think of these pillars, I, I think of what falls under all of these and how they're related to the success of our students, so. The real meat and potatoes of what we do in education, the real services that we give our students come through our student, I mean, our teachers. It is our teachers who are, are assessing our students, who are finding out what are, what are their needs and it's our teachers who are making authentic plans, genuine plans to try to improve the students' performance. So if we create a school system that supports them, that gives them the autonomy to be educators, that allows them to show us and demonstrate their expertise in what they create for their students in learning activities. Not only do we respect them as professionals, we encourage them to, to stay in our school. I also believe that if we give our teachers the opportunity for mobility without, and by mobility, I mean advancement, without having to make them leave the classroom, that's very important to keeping our educators, there are a lot of teachers who do want to do a lot, they want to step out of the classroom in the sense of they want to take on more roles that help them grow professionally, but they don't want to leave their classroom, they want to be with their students and a lot of us like to be in the classroom with our students. I myself have said many times that being in the classroom is the sanctuary for me, when I'm with my kids and I'm engaged with them and I'm teaching them, that's my safe place. Outside of that, all the paperwork, all the administrative stuff, all the data collecting, that's the, that's the part that's like frustrating sometimes because it's not, it's not where my heart is, I understand it's necessary to do all the data and break it down, but the real joy of being an educator comes from the classroom and really seeing our students grow. So I, I really want to hear more teacher voice when it comes to making decisions by the school board. I know we say that all the time, I know we say like, you know, oh, well, what did, you know, I'm running on a platform for teachers, there's a lot of people that say that. But how many of us are actually doing that when we get elected to the board, that's, that's an issue. Right now, one of my main commitments, I've been on a weekly basis trying to reach out to the teachers in the fourth district, sending them a newsletter, which anybody is open to getting, if you'd like to, you can sign up. But I want to show them my commitment right now, that I really am committed to listening to educators, that I want your feedback, I want to build a relationship with you. One thing I've talked, you know, I've talked to a couple of teachers and I've talked to a couple of residents in the fourth district and when I say, you know, look, I'm running for school board and they say, who's our school board member? I turn around and say, the fact that you don't know who your school board member is a problem, that's a problem. So it means that, that your school board member has not been engaged with you and you have not had the opportunity to really express your concerns for education, so I want to change that, that's one of my, my one of the pillars of, of my platform. I also want to attract families and when you look deeper into my platform online on, on my website, you'll see more details of how I plan to do that, but I can tell you right now that with attracting families, it really means meeting their needs, you know, listening to them, engaging them and having them at that table when we also make decisions, especially decisions that affect their child directly. In our community, we have for many years and this is in a lot of, of school divisions throughout our state and throughout the nation. We tend to look at our exceptional education students and our ELL, our English language learners as the second class, as that, we'll get to them, we'll get to them. And we look at our teachers that, that service our students directly to, our exceptional education teachers, our ELL teachers kind of the same way, like, well, you know, they, they can do this, we'll get to them later. Um, but we shouldn't do that. We should really be planning and making decisions with everybody in mind and making sure that they have a specific time and platform to voice their concerns and that we are really truly dedicating time to finding solutions to, to to give them the services that they need. So that's, that's one way, I want to make sure that we are not leaving anyone out, that our schools are inclusive, that our services are inclusive and that, that we are listening, that, that's data that, you know, we are leaving out, a lot of people talk about assessments, assessments as data, well, what about the conversations? You get so much more information when you talk to people, when you listen to people, when you meet with them one-on-one and you truly pay attention to what they're trying to tell you. So that, that is a point of how do I expect to attract families? And especially in the fourth district, we have a lot of young families that are coming in and we, you know, we have this kind of stigma of like, oh, we live in the community, but we don't put our children in these schools. Well, our schools are never going to improve if we don't get invested in them. We need, it is, it is a, it is a collective effort, it, it even governance, everything is a collective effort, that is what community is. So we need to all get invested, whether we have our children in Richmond Public Schools or not, we live in this community, we need to be part of it. And that goes into my third pillar, which is building communities. So I, when I have had the opportunity before the shutdown, which we'll talk about in a second, I, I've talked to a couple of people in the fourth district and they always say, you know, well, I don't have my children in Richmond Public Schools or I've had an experience with them, so I don't put them in their schools anymore. Okay, but you know, these are still your schools, these are still, we are still raising children in Richmond Public Schools or teaching children in Richmond Public Schools that are going to be your neighbors, that are going to be your colleagues, that might end up being your boss. So you need to know and you need to be invested in, in the development of these individuals, these are people that will be living in our communities, that do live in our communities. So I try to encourage them in that way, I also show them, look, we have a great environment in the fourth district, there are a lot of natural beauties that we all enjoy when we live out here, we, we go to Pony pasture, we go to Reedy Creek, we go out to Fort Hell Park, especially in the snow. But one issue that I have in building communities is that I do want to increase more environmental awareness and climate change awareness instruction in our schools and so there are a lot of state legislators and delegates who are actually pushing more legislation to help increase that instruction in our schools. And I would actually like to bring in more of our community members, whether they're civic leaders, church organizations, to help us do that kind of education, to get back some after-school programs, I know we had a garden club at Southampton Elementary, there's a beautiful garden on the side of Lucille Brown that needs some lo- loving and there's things like that that we can bring back to community because this are, these are common spaces that we share. And another thing that really ties us together and why it's important to be involved in public education is our budget. So whether you have children or not in Richmond Public Schools or any public schools, you still pay taxes and you still elect a city council members who decide, you know, how much money is going to go into our schools. And then you also, when you elect a school board member, you are electing somebody who is going to decide how that money is going to be spent. So we want to have a school board member who is going to look at the data, who is going to ask the hard questions and as far as like, how successful are these programs? Where's the real research, I want to see the numbers of what, you know, the proof that these programs or, or resources that we're buying for teachers actually works. And then I'm going to say, you know, okay, well, you know, how are, how, how can we implement this in our classroom, what's that going to look like for the people that have to do it? If we buy a resource or we decide to take on some initiative school, why is, is it going to actually be sustainable and is it going to be something that our educators and our school building leaders are going to be able to implement? Because what we don't want to do is buy resources and then throw them onto our educators and say, okay, here, now you do it. You implement this and then when things fail, we also put the blame on them, that's not right. So as a school board, we really need to be asking those questions and we need to stand by our decisions. And in order to really say, yes, I'm 100% sold on this, we need to do the research to, to do that. So are there any questions? Thank you to everybody again, this is so cool. We got a good group for coffee. So I know there have been some talk recently in the school board meetings about what is going to happen with reopening, I just want to say right now, there are also on social media, a couple of misinformation posts, some graphics that have gone out. If you see any of that, please, you know, don't reshare those graphics. And my biggest concern right now with reopening is making sure that, that we, we meet three main things with our kids, that we make sure that they have something to eat, whether it's now or when we go back, that they feel safe, whether it's in our schools or still at home. And that when they come back, we have the right resources to support their emotional needs, their social emotional needs and and any trauma that they bring with them after this event. Some students might be just adjusting to the change, to the going virtual, going online. And some students might be adjusting to a home life that might be difficult or has been difficult already. A parent might have lost a, a employment, something like that, when we come back, I want to make sure that we have in place those kinds of supports that our students are fed, they feel safe and that we have the right resources, especially the, you know, all, all of the source, the, the trauma-informed resources to meet our students and, and make them feel able to come back to school after this event, so those are my three, three main, outside of going back. I would, you know, I want to make sure that we're considerate of our parents and our guardians. Some of them are not going to feel comfortable sending back their students to school, whether it's a partial reopening. Some of them, you know, might have difficulty with finding childcare, that's a real issue, if we, if we don't have some sort of a system in place for our parents and guardians to have childcare. When we go, when, when we do get to some sort of reopening, that's going to be a conversation that we need to have. So what I really, really am hoping is that when the school board meets again, we have some real scenario planning done, we have some real plans that are, are possible, that we can implement and that will make everybody feel safe and comfortable to going back to school. It's going to be very interesting, this is such a crazy time, there's no, there's no no history that we can go back to, no like, you know, oh, well, this happened a couple of years ago or 10, 20, 30 years ago, we know what we did then and we're just going to adjust it for now. This is a new learning experience for everybody, but I just want to make sure that we are being realistic and we are really looking at everybody's needs when it is time to go back and even if we just end up doing virtual learning, like have we really thoroughly gone through and made sure that our students are connecting and that they, you know, are we giving them some sort of support for them to do assignments? You know, and how are we checking that, how are we measuring that there is equity in our virtual learning and there is equity in the, the scenario plans that we create? Oh, I see some questions, let's see. As a parent of a student at Westover Hills Elementary, we have had a positive experience overall, but really only seen any good changes in the last couple of years after a decade of living in the district. What is something positive you have seen from the top down in RPS? That's really good. I will say that over the years since, well, when I was in Richmond Public Schools, the messaging changed. The messaging changed a lot there, we did go through rebranding with the previous superintendent and I really liked when that happened because we had a logo, I don't know if people remember this, we used to have this logo for Richmond Public Schools that looked just like the cities. And I'm not saying that, you know, I'm not going to talk about the city politics right now, but when a lot of people saw that logo, they automatically thought of the city. And so we weren't a sep, it didn't feel like we were actually a separate entity, we felt like we were all, all bunched together, which built on to some of those negative feelings of, of, that people had had from years of, you know, of experiences with Richmond Public Schools and with the city. So I do like that the, the, the message that we are giving our families is changing and even now with our new superintendent, it is changing. I would like it to be more inclusive messaging, I think we need to work on that a little bit. But I do feel that in our classrooms, teachers are talking about, and this is actually throughout the profession nationwide, teachers are talking about being more culturally relevant, about giving our students representation and, and really giving them more voice and that's what I really like, I really like when we build a community and when you go into a classroom that there's a community there. So I do like that education is starting to shift and is thinking more about what is happening in the communities that is affecting our schools and how do we bring all that together, what is our part as a, a school to do our part to improve our, our communities and to keep our, our, our programs and our system as an inclusive constructive manner as much as possible, so I hope that answers your question, Kelly, that's one of my, my things right now. That change in, in it being more of a cultural thing. Louise, what are some current policies in RPS you would like to see changed? Right now, the biggest one that is driving me crazy is the agenda policy, so the agenda dissemination policy is driving me nuts. When the school board creates an agenda, they, the way, the way that the, the policy is worded right now is that they get three days, the administrative team gets three days. It has to have the agenda out by three days before the meeting. But when you really look at the wording, it says that the agenda needs to be out, but not necessarily the documents that will be presented. So this is my top one right now, this is one of the top ones. I would really like for that policy to say that the agenda and all of the presentation documents or information, especially the ones tied to actions, that means to vote, goes out three days before the school board meeting. It's very difficult to say that we truly want people to give an informed comment, that we really want to give people a seat at the table at decision-making when we when we don't give them the information that they need for that. So that, that is the, the, one of the main policies right now that I can tell you right off the top of my head, I would change or push to change right away. We need to have the information available to our families. I feel like information in, in this day and age is gold. It is, it always is. And that's, that's one way that keeps people out of decision-making. You know, if the systemically what, you know, people have been left out and marginalized because they have lack of access to information. So we need to make sure that we are, are being transparent and that we are being honest about what we're trying to do. And when we say we want to engage families and we want to engage the community in conversations, that we give them the information to, to be active participants in those conversations. So I hope that answers your question. All right, everyone. Well, it's 10 o'clock in the morning. I think this was very, very successful. For the next one, please invite out more of your friends and family and teachers and everybody that's involved and cares about public education and especially Richmond Public Schools. If you have not already visited the website, please do. If you're interested in volunteering, we still have a campaign going on right now where we're writing handwritten postcards to our neighbors. And if you, if you'd like to make a contribution, if you're able to, please, please do visit the website. And if you have any more questions or comments, just send me a message. I'm open to talking. If you want to invite me to your neighborhood association meeting, if you want to invite me to a Zoom meeting with you and some educators or your, your parish or church, please let me know. I am ready. I'm ready to talk and I'm ready to hear questions. Enjoy the rest of your long weekend and go warm up that cup of coffee because that's what I'm going to do. And thank you very much to everybody for joining me and I'll be sending out a post later on for when the next café is. And as we get closer to elections, I'll do some more, more often and in the evenings for some of our late risers. So have a good day. Bye-bye.